Alright. So, but before going through some of the draft ideas, I want to share a bit of history. Going back a couple superintendent ago, a number of district goals were established. And a lot of feedback from the folks at the time. Was that there were so many goals, it was impossible to even monitor them all, nevermind. Focus on specific things to try to improve. And so one of the fears, wait, welcome Paylor. One of the fears of a goal making process is you miss things. Because you want to have specific targets. But the other double edged piece of that is that you have so many goals that nothing's targeted and improved upon. It's just a series of things on paper that nobody really knows what specific task they're trying to do. So to just start a conversation late last spring, we. The conversation at school community level about some goals, but we wanted to make sure there was feedback. So what you're seeing here is that some slight modification from what we shared with you. Based on some initial feedback. We've gotten other feedback from folks who have seen this shared publicly. From we've had it up at two different school community agendas. We'll be sharing a survey after we get this round of feedback. We're hosting this tonight and if you do more than needed. There will be opportunities for survey feedback online. So the school committee wants to have good input. And so what I did for tonight was to. Break them into. Specific segments and so. If you're new to seeing them, it's easy to state a goal. And then sometimes you focus on is it measurable, but I what I worry about as a superintendent is. For everybody who is trying to carry out these goals. Are we being mindful of what it takes, who will impact, who else should we invite in, how would best inform that? How many years might that take? What's a reasonable measurable change? What might that cost our community, what resources might it take, so trying to be smart about this. What I did in my hope of tonight, the facilitate is I put each of the four goals on their own broken out section. And my thinking, and I'm open to ideas, it's it's look for your input. Is to put chart paper on each table with one goal. And then a fifth table, like when you need a sixth table with no goals on it. With the hope that we can get. Likes dislikes. I would change, I would suggest on each of the drafted goals. And then hopefully pages of, I think you should consider having a goal like this and other other thoughts around. What it takes to get the usual similar format. Does that be perfect, we really just want feedback. We did this yesterday with our administrative team and we got a lot of really good feedback, some of it I didn't expect, so. I will hopefully do that again tonight. Questions about. That thought process, okay. So I'll walk through them, I'm not going to read every piece of the detail. And I tried to make the goal big, so it's easy to see and then can walk through these other pieces. Let me see if I can zoom to as much as it will let me to make it. Fit, okay. So the first one is graduation rates, I think it's a metric everybody's familiar with. But what is a reasonable graduation rate growth without diminishing what a diploma means? And so we talked about different ideas that would include. Credit recovery and flexible pathways, strengthening dropout prevention. And enhancing career and college readiness, we have a lot of students. Who may not make it to a place of diploma. But they want to be. Ready for the world after high school. So if their pathway to getting a diploma or that credential includes things like adult education or maybe coming back after a break in time. That's okay, but we want kids to. I shouldn't just say kids because some of them are adults, learners should be college and career ready. And so those are specific components when we talk to employers. There's there's certain soft skills obviously that people want, but they also want their folks to be able to. Learn on the job and and. Maybe complete a certification course or college level courses to be successful. What we don't want to do, I'm inserting this, it's not on the paper. Is create a pipeline of diplomas and then push people out into the real world where they can't be successful in college. They struggle on the job because they don't have legitimate skills. So we're really focused on not watering down what we ask, but trying to find ways to get kids there and making sure that we're preparing them.
As you said, some of these areas, oh, would you take comments or questions on each one of the goals as you go along?
So that's that, that's what we'll do after I do a quick review, we'll put each of the goals on the table and people can add to. The papers that we have and then at the end I'll go, I'll do a round and get everyone's comments. So I will welcome your comments for sure, but I would ask that we try to capture it on the sheets. Or say at the end, once everybody's had a chance to. Hopefully participate with each other and go through it. You can see the next piece of this as far as how it's structured is a breakdown. How it how it could break down and. Looking at different methodology around this, so there's some research that informs some of these pieces. But you would need to obviously take steps, you have to do something different than what we're currently doing. And measure that as we do it to see what its effectiveness is and continue to try. And then we have responsible parties, so who's in charge of that and on a lot of these you see. Community or community partners, a strong believer in. I can't create and simulate all of this change and growth in communities on my own. I can, I can participate, I can try to lead, but a lot of these things will take everyone and we've had ideas like. After school programs that are tutoring kids using. Specific tutoring strategies that align to strategies that are used in school that are research based and showing growth. And so we're not there, lots of people doing good work, but it's disjointed from each other. So those are just some of the ideas that are out there. And then you can see metrics for success, anytime we have any of these goals. So often we're working toward things, but we're not measuring. So these would be specific ways we can measure each of these things. If you're going to participate in a group or want to make comments about. Any of these goals were new ones, we'd love for you to have as many of these pieces of the. The 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 goals that exist as you can think of, but I'd also be curious if you have thoughts on. What else should be part of that goal from like a structural perspective? So you have things you'd measure, who's responsible, if you think there are other components, we're open to that framework as well. Goal two, improve academic performance on standardized tests and math and reading. Standardized tests are not always the answer, but it is a consistent metric metric. That produces results that are bigger than we are, so when we talk about. Standardized tests. Math and reading, I think are the most critical, I'm going to argue a little stronger towards reading than I am math, because you can't do an extravehement math if you cannot read. And comprehend different problems before you, but. This is another area of if if we could have anything when we. Issue diplomas or move kids from one grade to the next, based on their their achievement and grade and whatnot age. That we know that they are closing any gaps that might exist from not being on grade level. Some of these things we already do, and so we'd want to continue efforts, but. Using evidence based curriculum and instruction. Expand tutoring and extend, excuse me, extended learning, so. Tying back to that after school programs, different tutoring models, different hours of the day, evenings. And that that high dosage tutoring for kids. Grades three through eight and in math and reading if they're currently behind or want to extend. Also want to look at strategies around leveraging technology and data. Artificial intelligence is changing so very rapidly. But there are a lot of tools out there that are developing that kids are engaging in to. Learn things in a way they can access anywhere in the world, so. We don't want to be blind to that or or. Refuse to at least look at those tools as something that might be beneficial. And again, you can see some timeline components. You're going to use a curriculum, you got to train and support the staff. If you're going to do tutoring effort and or technology, you have to. Systematize that and so that will take some efforts and you also have to have the devices, so. You need spaces, you need coordination, you need devices, you need people, so all of those things have some associated costs with them, so we'd have to be mindful of it. Again, you see the responsible parties. Including tutoring partners. And some potential metrics for success. Again, I'm not trying to push standardized testing, but it is a metric that compares. A student to other kids in the country and we always have to be mindful of. If if I'm grading a student's. Assessment and they're my student. I could influence the outcome of that score and not that teachers would do that, but I. We want to be careful what systems and metrics and incentives are considered in that in that effort. Three, safe, travel informed school environment. We know our community really well, we know there's a lot of trauma, a lot of grief, a lot of things that are not yet dealt with. And so as we try to maintain safe spaces and and travel informed school environment, there's things that we can do. So we can see that there's ideas here, including implement travel informed practices. We do some of this now, I think we could target it and do much better. Adopt restorative justice components as well. Enhance mental health supports, we were very hopeful about some grants that came through, some of those have waffled a bit, but. We know at a minimum, we can continue to build bridges to students and take care of our adults with mental health supports. Strengthening school safety is a component listed here. We do a lot of this now, but ongoing, we could. Have some more efforts that are specifically focused around school safety. There are timeline components of what things could be done and when. Who's responsible and again, metrics for success. So you see SCL and travel informed care, suspension rate reduction, reduction. More students who have been identified with social, emotional or mental health needs, receive services. And then one of the goals here is common language and strategy, so. It's not luck of the draw, what student has which teacher to know what supports might exist if we're using common language and we have common strategies. It should be much more, a much more supportive net, if you will, for kids who have that level need. The fourth goal, foster community and student engagement and partnerships. Again, going outside the walls of school or bringing people into the walls of the schools. To. Help with all the things that challenge our community from poverty, violence, substance abuse. But engaging families and local organizations to to build and leverage resources that do exist. And within that improving student attendance, we've been saying more and more as things seem to be. Trending better, I say that with caution because we're not there yet, obviously. But if we get really good at teaching and learning, we expect attendance to improve. But if it doesn't, we're doing a lot of really good work and people aren't there for it, so. Making an effort around attendance and truancy and making sure we're getting kids to school and helping them stay there. Family engagement, we think that the the number one reason why some parents have limited participation in their children at school is just. Relationships and they're not familiar with schools or maybe they didn't have such a great experience in school, so walking into that space is a challenge. So how do we strengthen that? Building community partnerships, there's a whole lot of people in our community doing great work and they continue to seek funding to do ongoing great work. Making sure we're working together and understanding each other and building that capacity. And of course, we have addressed community violence, which I think everyone in the room knows is an ongoing challenge for us here and. We're committed to getting better. But I think school can play a major role in how we do that. Again, timelines and some some details here. Who's responsible from from me all the way through to city officials, community. Some different measurements or metrics for success. Student attendance, big one, obviously. Families participating in in workshops or. Councils or providing input. I have on here three schools operated as community schools by 2028. Without diving into it, there's a lot of research that's been done and the the term being used is community schools. But a community schools encompass very specific methodologies, practices, who's in, who's who's in and when. What bridges are specifically connected to school and families. It's when you get into that more intensive tutoring model, so it's it's. It's a comprehensive approach to schooling. I'm not saying it's the answer, but it's a model that exists, it's very supportive for schools, so. If we went in this direction, that's when you start talking about, okay, to do those things, what resources might you need? And and how do you do that? So one of the metrics could be how many schools are using that model at what any particular time. And then 90% of students benefit from partnership programs. Mentoring, food support, things like that annually. We know student engagement in what is. Kind of being coined right now is third spaces is being critically important. So a third space, so you got home, you got school, the third space is a community organization, a sport that you play, a club that you're involved with. Religious faith practices, any space that kids go to. That is surrounded by people that will inform how they grow, right? It takes a village to raise our young people and if they. Are connected to specific activities that are outside of home and outside of school, they are better rounded people. If we have enough mentors and coaches and leaders of different activities. We believe that we can get 90% of our kids at some point in their school and career engaged with. Something that is outside of just straight academics and just being alone. So that would be, that would be an effort, I just think that would solve a lot of other problems, like having nothing to do in the evenings or at night. It may not be perfect, but I think we'd all love to go by a field and see. Four teams playing small games because it feels not big enough and talk about that in our budget, then then it'd be talking about curfews and fences and things like that, so. And then towards the bottom section here, I broke out some some different components, you know, how do we pay for these things? And then also what are some estimated costs and so. These are big numbers and we try to estimate them based on annual costs. So for example, credit recovery and tutoring effort, if we build out with with those community schools type model. You could be looking at a million and a half per year to get that up and running and and see how it goes. Mental health staff, I put a million here, that's probably low. But trying to trying to give us a target curriculum and professional development. Teachers and ed techs want how they get paid to do professional development, they're not able to go home, so we have to compensate them and also there's materials. Safety upgrades is on here. And community schools partnership is on there and and so. With an idea again, trying to build a construct so that we're being real about our goals. Just saying right off the shelf, if we went with this, it's it's a rough estimate that we would spend. 4.75 million dollars a year as soon as we try to do all of these things. And then we have to ask the question in the mirror. Can our community support? Either different changes or new dollars. At that level and if we can't, I think it's okay, I just think we have to be real serious about what we are going to do and what we can afford. And we put all of our energy into that. And if that area grows or areas grow, we look at how we look at other things and maintain it. Monitoring evaluation, the committee. Has had a concept about a dashboard, so we've started behind the scenes crafting ways to put data that aligns to some of these. Into a dashboard, so community members at any point in time could go to the webpage and see it from a year to year. Perspective or whatever section of year that those metrics come in and you could see. Specific growth, how it ties to different activities. I've got this vision in my head that if you click a couple of times, you can see the dollars. And the changed efforts or specific strategies that went directly to specific outcomes, it's that might be too convoluted, but. I'd love to see how specific commitment and energy toward a thing impacts the change. Community feedback and adjustments, I think this is an ongoing forever process. I think the community's wants and needs will shift over time and I think the goal should. Have have a relationship with how things shift and change over time. Communication plan, we were just trying to make sure that it's nice to have goals, but if you don't communicate them or their progress or the status of things. People can forget what efforts are important, so they're not helping with the effort and and that would be on us, but also. We need to do things internally to produce things to share externally, updates to the school committee and continued work. For transparency purposes, we'd want to publish a report on goals, the spending and the outcome on a regular annual basis. And i- if we do all those things, some expected outcomes by 2030, which seems like a far away number, which is. About four years away. Is, you know, some some growth areas here that we identified. Okay. So that's what we have in the documents, my thinking was the way we printed them, we put one on a couple of pages. And we separated them out. Two copies of each, just pick a table, then we can relocate to that side or we can use this side. And and just let you provide input, I like this part, I don't like this hole, I would add this to this hole, I would take this out of this hole. And then also a table where people could, and I'll put a couple sheets on that table where people could say, I think these are goals you need to consider. At any level of detail you want to share with that. I do have copies, a handful of packets of all the goals in the packet, if anybody wants to accept, will that work? So you want to give me a hand with this? Careful, paper mark is so. This can be goal one, which is graduation rates.
Our number can be longer.
Yes, we want you to get it moved around and and make comment wherever you'd like. Goal two, improve academic performance on standardized tests and reading. Goal three, create a safe, traumatic, peaceful environment. Go here. And go for. The bus, creating a city location. And then we'll set up these two tables as others. But I'll leave. I'll leave a sheet there so you can see the structure too. So take some time, roam around. I don't want to limit anyone's input. But roam around and look at the goal and provide. Let's let's start with. A 15 minute window, if you see where people are at, I don't want to, I don't want to squash anyone's point of view, but want to. Provide the one. Right?
This is three and then four.
Three and then four, and we're going to do open ones over here for. Both that aren't there, an input. Uh no, people can run around, they can save the tables. Sue's got to put some big tape for them. Good. Email is fine, but we're we're giving people up to. Those, but these are each of the specifics. Yeah, we're taking input any way we can.
All right. Yeah, we'll email you.
Thank 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 you.[486.56]
So, welcome back everyone. Thank you for going table to table and providing lots of rich feedback. We were able to have some conversations too that I thought were were very meaningful. But I do want to give everyone a chance to share either something that you didn't put on a sheet or something you think is really, really meaningful to you or to the process that you did put on the sheet. Just kind of open it up. Anyone have any thoughts that they want to share?
You mean about what waves?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, just an open, any, any points that you want to emphasize from your lens.
There's things on these sheets to do this with you that. And a lot of them are things you're already doing. You know, to some extent, they can't be improved or, but there's you're a huge business and not any one of us can understand all the different things you are jumping and working on.
Yeah.
And so, some way, some way to be able to celebrate that or, you know, the community to be more informed about that. And that gets into the whole issue, you know, where do people get their information? Whether it's the newspaper, the Facebook page, or the this, or the website, or the, you know, I don't know how you get that out. But it's just, you're doing so many good things already that the community knows nothing about. And I, I want to celebrate that.
Yeah, great. Good point. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
I didn't write it, but I noticed a lot of papers had homework. Used it as something people wanted.
Okay.
And I'd like to hear more about that and your reaction to that.
Does anyone want to share their thoughts on homework? Someone who might have put something down?
Yeah, I do believe also. That we should, you know, still this, uh, bags, homework on school.
Okay.
Because I think doing that, it would involve also have a lot of men, and he's a person about during a daily school, it will be awesome.
Yeah.
And I do it will be awesome.
Yeah, so more support for homework and, and having opportunities to practice and then, and reinforce what they've been developing. Yeah.
Well, this is why we have homework though. In the elementary schools, they don't even have textbooks. And almost all of their work is done on the school laptops. Or iPads, I should say. So there would be no way that they can get reinforcement outside the school like. When I went to school, we had at least two to three hours worth of homework, but we had textbooks. Then we would bring home. Now there's no such thing as textbooks to speak of.
Okay.
I would just say in terms of homework. And for elementary school, personally, I think the best homework. And for elementary school, personally, I think the best homework that a student can do in elementary school is to. Either read with a parent or a sibling or read independently or have someone read to you regardless of whether you're in the partner or fifth grade. Because just hearing the language and. You know, the expression in someone's voice and the relationship you form when you sit with somebody and it just says that reading is. Is the most important thing you can do and we can support that at our classroom libraries or our school library or. If you have a big regular library downtown.
Yeah.
Why here you don't walk around with textbooks. Positive in a weird way, but but I just think that.
Reading.
You know.
Exposure to language and stories and.
Lots of good things are happening in the schools that we don't even know about.
Yeah.
Really do support that.
The thing is with an awful lot of these kids, okay, if you tell them to read at home and everything like that. They're taught in the school, but then when they get home, there is no English being spoken at home.
That's not always true.
An awful lot of it, I can tell you. English is not a fluent language at home. So. So it's very difficult.
So I think that we're sliding a little bit off, just looking for school committee specific goals. So this would be the things that guide the work that school committees do. I want to be careful with generalizing certain things because I don't think that. It will fit every household by any stretch.
John, homework where it benefits kids most and I would think that. If the school committee were, you know, sort of looking or getting into that and the summary of what the research says would be really. How that because it's definitely the impact increases as students get older and what they have to do and.
Yes, to handle.
It's really challenging too to navigate. Normal. School business if you're neurodivergent versus neurotypical in learning and stuff. I didn't write it down yet, but. There was conversations around like community and student engagement, partnerships. I think what's important is like when you're saying that you want to give youth the tools. To thrive when they get a degree or they graduate from any kind of program, whatever it might look like where the school. It's really also important for youth to be able to identify their own support systems. Other times folks might have heard used as cloud mapping, but it's kind of like what you referenced the third place. We can have and present mentors to youth, whether they're in job or credentialing or mentorship. Type of program, whatever it might be, education. But it's really important for you to be able to. Because some of them are like making adult decisions that they didn't ask to be forced in positions to make those decisions. But they might not know how to navigate or identify like their inner circle or secondary circle or their third place, their outer supports and. Who to go to if they're struggling with things like homework or regain or worse like violence or team debating violence. Oh, I did want to say too, I think this is a reasonable goal. As far as like trying to increase graduation rate, it obviously takes community, but I think. School, you know, talking to mothers and parents in the street is something that they haven't interested and interest in. So I think those conversations should continue to still happen and I'm happy to help support to connect in any way. Another thing about youth is that I understand this language. It's like in the school lens, it's going to be. Talking about the credentials, the degrees and. Job skills and things like that. Because those are kind of like measurable outcomes. Is that the correct term? So, but I think too for a youth is. If they're being viewed or seen differently because of behavior or diagnosis or. You know, just for the wrong decision that a lot of the youth. Want to be part of something. They don't want to be treated differently. And I think that's when they start to not maybe thrive in the way that. We maybe if they're being moved out of class or whatever. So sometimes that has to happen, obviously for their learning and for the safety of others perhaps if it's. That kind of age. But I think. Somehow, I don't know what it looks like. Conversations of reassurance or something. Youth need that aspiring and inspiring kind of language that they can thrive or. You know, there could be alternatives for learning. They just might not know how to ask in a moment like, wait a minute, I don't understand. This on, you know, on this exam. And can you sit with me sometime? Sometimes they can't even just verbalize that. And a lot is because of trauma and stuff or being silenced and things like that. I think. I was. Happy to see a lot of the things of recognizing maybe. What youth might be struggling with, but. I didn't see a lot of like. Identification of like the community barriers. There'll be conversations around like community violence, but not that domestic violence is like poor people's plight. Including things like honor based with youth. And so. I am. I think there's language that maybe won't conflate. Poor and working class youth or families of poor and working class people. Be tied or equated to community violence slowly, or there could be maybe a different. Way to name it. And. The other thing about improving school structures to increase student interest. Is again about that inspiring and inspiring language, but I think a lot of the youth is that relationship and trust building. And so that's where the mentorship really comes in handy. But it's. When it's four kids and if there's elements of trauma, it's like deep, intricate, grueling work. And sometimes it looks like trying to repair a relationship with like. A youth and a grandma where the youth stole from his grandma's purse, you know? And she doesn't want him in her home anymore. It just, it's so intricate, but I think, you know, this is possible. I think there was just one more thing. About identifying community barriers. I might not remember right now. Oh, like as the school and the staff, I think it's great that. You might want to focus on like that barrier resolution team to identify community barriers because. Like youth workers like from the beginnings. People that do. Street outreach to the youth. Were usually the ones to get firsthand. Notification if there's something prevalent. You know, a new street drug overdoses, whatever it might be impacting you. Like teen dating violence with the use of guns. And so I think that's really important and that you could really be and. Their mental and kind of like sound maybe allow for us to be able to respond to that. Thanks for this.
Thank you. Yeah.
I'll be brief. I was at Strengthen L.A. Retreat earlier this week. That is focused as a workforce development initiative in the community and there was a table on education. And it's clear that there's a gap kind of maybe at all levels of sort of the skills. That employers are looking for and sort of matching that with the curriculum. And so just figuring out that I added that under sort of new.
Yeah.
New goal areas. The other piece, I'm, I hope to be on school committee soon. My name's Julia. I'm running for Lord Port. And I have been out talking to folks in the community and talking to retired teachers. And appropriate use of technology is something that's come up of, you know, folks just, you know, kids get so much screen time now and yes, it is an important tool that they need. To, you know. Navigate the world, but it's also like reducing their attention span and their ability to learn in the school. So. Figuring out when they're at school, is there a way, you know, that we can figure out how, you know, appropriate to age and grade level and all that stuff. For kids, the appropriate use of tech. And then the last thing is I hear, you know, safety again and again from people at from everything from. You know, fighting in schools as well as, you know, there was an incident of. You know, in Portland public schools of a parent being abducted by masked unarmed, you know, masked armed people who. Claimed to be federal agents but didn't identify themselves. Or, yeah, so it really figuring out what the like reviewing the school's. Safety protocol and policies and making sure that educators, I mean, like the staff and are trained on the protocols and that. Families are really aware of what this, you know, what their rights are, what the school is doing to really make sure that school, to really ensure that school is a. Safe place for kids. And I know there is the goal around safety and there's a lot to be done there, but the policy piece felt like I didn't see it on there. So I added that.
Like, thank you. Others who haven't had a chance yet? And Jim, I know you emailed me some thoughts that you had typed out. So thank you for that. If anybody else has that, you're welcome. Just please send that along. I'll take those feedback. Any format, really. You want to drop something off? You want to send an email? You want to include an attachment? You're pleased, welcome to send it. We're going to continue to capture the things that you did share. We'll get that typed and include it in our next round of feedback with the school committee. And then also there'll be a survey that goes up publicly to gather additional feedback. Anybody else want to share a final word?
I just want to do a quick follow up on the homework thing. I think it would be a good idea, maybe if the teachers could send worksheets home for the kids to work on. Never once reinforced what they've done that that day in the classroom. And then it would give the parents the opportunity to know what's going on, what their child is learning in the classroom. So when the parents go in for the parent teacher conference. They would not be caught on hard or have to be caught up and then the meeting is over. They would have an idea and then you could come into the parent teacher conferences more informed.
All right. If there's nothing else, thank you all very, very much for coming tonight and taking time out of your busy schedules. I hope you brought a jacket because it's like freezing outside now. The temperature shifted really quickly, but welcome to Maine. It's, I call it crisp and fresh. It's nice. If you have any final thoughts on your way out, you're welcome to jot anything else down. And again, feel free to email me, drop off something at the office if you need to, or when the survey comes out, feel free to plug more information into those. All right. Thank you very much for your time. Hope you have a good evening.